................................................................................................
Yes, Mr. Horton. I just want to preface this by saying that on principle, I had always been opposed to official prayers, even legislative ones which are approved or allowed by the Supreme Court's ruling as legislative prayer being an exemption to the unconstitutionality of official prayers because of the role and the tradition of it going back to the founding of the U.S. But I had been opposed to that. And then in just the recent couple of years, I saw the divisiveness in our country, the anger, the polarization, issues of dominance, violence, and that has swayed me. So, in the spirit of humility, I would like to offer the following thought from Swami Vivekananda. All differences in this world are of degree and not of kind because oneness is the secret to everything. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Rastader?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Charman?
Here.
Mr. Schenk?
Here.
Chairman Horton?
Here. Hearing of the public, that this first portion of the, or this part of the meeting, we generally do, we hear from the public. Anyone who calls in ahead of time to get on the agenda, we allow them five minutes. Seeing none called in, anyone else that would care to or may care to could step to the podium, and we would allow them three minutes to make any comments that they would care to. And so, hearing of the public, any citizens wish to be heard. Seeing, hearing none, I move for the, I need the movement for the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
No, I need someone to move first.
Oh.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Councilman Rastader. I think I've done that five, six times. Any reports from county officials, from county executive, or her designated? Excuse me, I need a vote on the minutes. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Charman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Reports from county executive were designated.
Thank you, ma'am.
Finance committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met on January 30th, and we are presenting old business A, B, and C. And in new business, we are presenting A, D, E, F, G, and H. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear. Personnel, Councilwoman Rennie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The personnel committee met on January 30th. We are presenting items under new business 8B and 8C, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other reports from other council persons?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just have a report tonight. Council has joined together to honor Al Aloysius Ropaleski, Al Ropaleski, and we have a citation that we would like to present to his family at his passing. I have had the opportunity to know Al for many, many years. Just a great guy, very committed to his family and committed to our community, and served as a judge of election and poll worker in 521 for many, many years, and he will certainly be missed. And I would please like the clerk to read tonight in its entirety the citation that we have for Mr. Ropaleski. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aloysius Ropaleski, 1922 to 2020. Whereas Aloysius Ropaleski passed from this world on January 22nd, 2020, at the age of 97 years. Mr. Ropaleski was born on April 16th, 1922, in Erie to the late Michael Joseph Ropaleski and Helen Elizabeth Wazaleski Ropaleski. And whereas Mr. Ropaleski attended St. Casimir School, studying in both English and Polish, he graduated from East High School where he lettered in swimming, worked as a pinsetter at several clubs as a teenager, worked for the Pennsylvania Railroad after graduation, spent 29 years at Bliley Electric, and then voted his time to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as a fire and safety inspector. And whereas Mr. Ropaleski began his extraordinary combat record with U.S. Army at Bloody Utah Beach on D-Day, survived the ferocious battle for Hero 122, July 3 through 8 of 1944, which cost the lives of 70% of Charlie Company. Al fought on at the Battle of Felice Gap, using his bazooka to destroy two German tanks and a half-track, survived incredible odds as a member of Charlie Company. As they fought their way across France, through, though wounded multiple times, Al battled with bravery and valor. And whereas Mr. Ropaleski was past junior vice commander and adjutant of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 197, was life member and past trustee of the DAV, Chapter 73, served as judge of elections in Erie 521 for many years. And whereas, in addition to his parents and wife, Virginia Beneki Ropaleski, Al is preceded in death by his five brothers, John M., Edwin, Richard, Casimir, and Daniel Ropaleski, and five sisters, Sophia Sokolowski, Teresa Kounaki, Gertrude Ropaleski, Joan Ropaleski, and Helen May Ropaleski. He is survived by his daughter Patricia Zaleski and her husband, Mooch of Erie, grandsons Matthew and David Zaleski of Erie, sisters Anne Marie Ropaleski of Erie, Eileen Ropaleski of Erie, and Elizabeth Wordle of Mentor, Ohio, sister-in-law of Rose Marie Ropaleski of Erie, his goddaughter Mary Claire Spear of Chile, New York, and many nieces and nephews. And now therefore, we, the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join in celebrating the life of Sergeant Alois Ropaleski, a man who epitomized the greatest generation and in service of our country, earned a Bronze Star, Purple Heart, Good Conduct Medal, Distinguished Unit Citation, American Campaign Medal, European, African, Middle Eastern, with seven Service Stars, and the French Legion of Honor. Alois F. Ropaleski dedicated his life to his country, his family, and his community, and we will be forever grateful. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Before moving to the old business, I'd just like to welcome scouts that I see out here. See, we have scouts from Troop 146, Fairview, and we have Nathan and Chris Spiegel, the assistant scout leader. And also, we're privileged to have a couple of our women scouts, our young lady scouts from Scout Troop 104, Erie Mill Creek, and I think it's Laura, there, and there's Scout Master, Chris Smith. We want to welcome you here to democracy at Erie County Council. Thank you, guys, for having me. Okay, old business. I have the second reading of ordinance number one, 2020, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number one, 2020. First, 2020 Planning Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $150,000 for match funding from Act 101 Trust Fund.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilman Anderson. Councilwoman Clear, any discussion? Roll call.
On ordinance one, Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Charman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number two, 2020, entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number two, 2020. First, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $34,750 for purchase of a vehicle for the district attorney's office.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilperson Anderson and Clear. Any discussion? I'm gonna make some, well, actually not. Roll call, please.
On ordinance two, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Charman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Second reading of ordinance number three, 2020, entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number three, 2020. Second, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $100,000 for County Day Reporting Center Startup Funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Schenk. Any discussion? Well, I'm gonna make some comments on this one. I made them the other day at finance, but I want to reiterate it from the dais so that it's on the official, on the official record. I'm gonna vote yes in the affirmative of this, but it's very, very hard for me to keep giving money to anything court-related while men and women are being transported from the Erie County prison in the middle of winter in jumpsuits and sandals. In fact, I have a problem appropriating any money to do anything for the county until we actually take care of county people. And I think that it's disgraceful that we would take 75% of an inmate of a man and woman's commissary, creating debt that the county will never recoup, and they're still being asked to come to prison, to come to court inadequately dressed. And I'm gonna beat that horse until the Sheriff's Department or Judge Tricilla or someone from upstairs buys coats for those prisoners. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance three, Mrs. Charman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
First reading of ordinance number four.
A first reading of ordinance number four, 2020. Third, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $9,000 to correct office supplies line item for the district attorney.
First reading of ordinance number five.
A first reading of ordinance number five, 2020. Fourth, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $4,568 for Court IT Network Administration Analyst Job Reclassification.
First reading of ordinance number six, 2020.
A first reading of ordinance number six, 2020. Fifth, 2020 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $58,240 for creation of juvenile probation position to meet DPW-OCYF mandate.
One second. First reading of ordinance number seven, 2020.
A first reading of ordinance number seven, 2020. Approving a waiver of abid requirements of the County Purchasing Code to select a printer qualified by Dominion Voting for Erie County Elections in 2020.
Okay. For our listening audience and our public and our youth that come down to witness democracy, what you saw is us vote on everything that was a second reading. The administrative code requires a first and second reading, and so those items that were just a first reading tonight will not be voted on. The items that were second reading were voted on at our, were read as first readings at our last meeting and discussed prior to us coming out here. So it's not that we're just doing this speed dating or anything. We've already, we've already had the discussion and kind of pre-voted, well, not pre-voted, but staked our, had discussion on the matter. Resolution number four, 2020, please, Mr. Smith.
Resolution number four, 2020. A resolution approving a revision to Erie County's fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, roll call, Mr. Smith.
On resolution four, Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Resolution number five, 2020, Mr. Smith.
Resolution number five, 2020, setting an hourly rate for the county council CPA.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend this resolution, and I make a motion to amend, and certainly thank our solicitor, Tom Talarico, for the work that he's done on this on behalf of council to give us the proper language that we were looking for, and that really spells out what we were intending to do. And so I would ask that the clerk read that language, but I'm asking in my motion to change, to, first of all, to eliminate all of the verbiage in our original resolution from the title down and have that replaced with our new language from the title down under our new resolution five. And then the clerk can read that after we have a second. Thank you.
I have, it's been moved, there's second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is this a discussion simply on the change of language?
This is a discussion on the amendment. I think we've already had the discussion on the change of language, so it's yes to that answer. The discussion would be on the new language coming into the, that's being offered as an amendment to the previous resolution.
Right, I do have a comment then. And the language I had hoped would clarify a certain amount of the work that was to be done on behalf of county council. As the highest legislative body in the county, to be setting the boundaries of what we are going to pay someone for their work, council has an obligation and a responsibility to utilize sound management practices and ethical practices. Any other department of the county would have to operate under those standards to approve a pay scale or a pay, an hourly rate with no proposal, no supporting documentation whatsoever, no contract, no scope, no parameters of the work. I would submit is irresponsible management practice, and I cannot support it for that reason. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any other comments, but I think that I need to, feel I need to respond to that because I would disagree respectfully with my colleague that council is not being irresponsible. We are actually stepping forward and setting the salary. The scope of work, which has been the same scope of work for the last 41 years, is to work on any and all projects that county council deems are important to the financial stability of all of Erie County. And we do have parameters as far as the pay or the amount of pay, and that has already been determined through our budgetary process that was passed by council and figured into our professional services fee. I think council has been very fiscally responsible with this, and to not have a fiscal advisor for us that can give us guidance and help us make the proper financial decisions would actually be the element that would be irresponsible of fiscal management. And so I have worked with Joe Maloney, I have seen his work. There are specific projects that he works on that the circumstances are such that they're out of our control as far as the amount of work that may be undertaken by him, but we have a responsibility to all of the taxpayers of Erie County to protect that work, to ensure that whether the situation works out one way or the other, that the taxpayers of Erie County have been represented, and we've been able to make our decisions based on sound fiscal advice that we've received from our advisor. And so therefore, I am not only going to vote in favor of this, but am proud to step forward and vote for Joe Maloney in setting his hourly rate, and believe that this has made us very transparent and allows everybody in the community to know that we have a financial advisor, we know what we're paying him, and we respect the work that he's doing, and we know the scope of work that needs to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion, comments? I think I'll make a couple of comments, because I think verbiage matters. I think that there are certainly some things that, processes that can be done better, but to, to characterize the work or the hiring as irresponsible, I'd kind of take umbrage with. It's hard to say that something's irresponsible when you have a 42-year work history or record, and a healthy, healthy, healthy fund balance. I think through the work, the administration and the CPA, Erie County's been very, 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 very fortunate to have. I agree that the scope of work could be more clearly delineated, but there has been a general offering of scope of work, which is to see to finances, see us through the finish line of the Erie Community College, and to serve as this body CPA on a, as required basis until we hire our own, until we hire a CPA. And so, I respect everyone's wishes and opinion on it. I think the vote on the floor that's going to be entertained will be to the amendment first, and then if that, when that, if that passes, then we'll go to the vote on the resolution, unless anyone else has any other commentary. Roll call on the amendment, please, Mr. Smith.
Before I call out the roll, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the resolution amendments?
That might help.
Yes, sir. Resolution number five, 2020, ratifying an hourly rate for the county council's accounting consultant. Whereas Erie County Council retained the services of Joseph Maloney, CPA/CFE of Maloney Reed and Scarpidian Company, LLP, as its accountant and financial advisor in 1979 and until his retirement in 2018. Whereas Erie County Council continues to retain the services of Joseph Maloney subsequent to his retirement as a financial consultant to county council at the hourly rate of $200. And whereas Joseph Maloney has agreed to provide and will continue to provide financial consultation and expert witness services in connection with Erie County's application for a community college pending before the Pennsylvania Board of Education, be resolved, the county council of the county of Erie hereby ratifies and confirms the retention of Joseph Maloney as its independent financial consultant at the hourly rate of $200 per And now you would like a roll call on the amendment?
On the amendment.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Now we have a roll call on the new, on the resolution with the new language.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastader?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Resolution six, 2020, Smith?
Resolution number six, 2020, opposing the use of conversion therapy on persons under 18 years as a means of shifting gender orientation or expression.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution six.
Yes.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by councilpersons Clear and Shauerman. Any discussion or commentary?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would actually like to make a few comments. When this was, when I saw that this was coming, I was very, very excited. We had someone come and talk to council, actually, we've had many members come and talk to council about what this is, the use of conversion therapy. And I'm actually in charge of the Gay Straight Alliance at McDowell High School, and I understand what there, many children have to go through in understanding who they are and their identity, and acknowledging that the practices of conversion therapy are not serving any psychological positive purpose. I think by the county is magnificent that we are doing this, and I'm very, very proud that this resolution was created, and I'm proud to support this, and I will be voting yes on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clear. Any other commentary?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to commend my colleagues on council in bringing this resolution forward, Chairman Horton and Councilwoman Kim Clear on bringing this resolution forward, I believe it was the two of you. I agree with everything that Councilwoman Clear stated, and it goes without saying that it... that this is absolutely something that should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commentary? Well, I'll make a brief remark. I'm pleased as punch to bring this forward and to co-sponsor this with Councilwoman Clear. I think Erie County has long been an advocate of equity and fair treatment and justice and fair play for all. We've demonstrated it through our HRC, our Human Relations Commission, on, we demonstrated it when we, most recently, when we made a prior criminal offense or criminal record, criminal background a protected class in the same way that we protect LGBTQ community in the same way that we protect people because of their ethnicity, in the same way we protect people because of their age or gender. And Erie County always seems to step up in the forefront. The city took a lead on this, but I primarily wanted it to be the first thing that I did in 2020. I want to ensure that no child, either lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, trans, still figuring it out, that they not be subjected to such vile and harmful treatment that has no scientific or medical basis, more often than not is performed through ignorance. And so I will be supporting this legislation. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On Resolution 6, Mr. Rastetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman.
Yes.
Mr. Shank.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Clear.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we go on, could I ask for a point of clarification? On Resolution Number 5, should we have made a motion to move it forward as amended before we actually took the vote? We put it, we moved it and seconded it, and then we moved to amend it, and it was amended.
We voted on the amendment.
We voted on the amendment. Should we then have made a motion to vote on the resolution as amended before we voted?
Well, he read.
It was a vote on both.
It was. We had him read it. We just used that particular language. He read it.
What was different is that the discussion on the resolution as amended took place before the resolution was amended.
That's what happened.
Supposedly.
Okay, but we properly, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Resolution Number 7, Mr. Smith, please.
Resolution Number 7, 2020, amending Resolution Number 1, 2020, approving a revision to Erie County's Fiscal Year 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilpersons Anderson and Clear. Are you ready for discussion or the roll call? Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith.
On Resolution 7, Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shouerman.
Yes.
Mr. Shank.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Clear.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes.
We adjourned, stand adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.